Evening. The meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been on January 19th, 2024. A copy of the notice was specifying the date, time, and location was posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall, given to the clerk administrator, mailed or faxed or emailed to the Courier-News, and placed on a Borough website. If any member believes that this meeting is being held in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, please state your views at this time. These proceedings are of a judicial nature. Only those items on the agenda will be addressed, and proper judicial decorum must and will be maintained. Next item on the agenda, roll call, please.
Chairman Hader?
Here.
Mr. Allitt? Ms. Carpenets?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Videmsky?
Here.
Mr. Flores?
Here.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Would someone please move that Ed's absence be excused?
I'll hold second.
Move second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, um, pledge of allegiance. Yes, and Mr. Da-- I'm sorry. Would move second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Forgot about Stuart. My paddle won't work.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Someone like to move the minutes for the last meeting?
I'll move them.
Second.
Move the second. Roll call, please.
Chairman Hader?
Epstein.
Ms. Carpenets?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Videmsky?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Okay, we have no resolutions? Okay. So we have two land use-- All right. We have two land use applications. The first one is, um, okay, uh, 144, 141 West End Avenue.
Art, before we start then--
Yeah.
I'm new here, so I don't understand what's going on. I'm not sure why we're hearing this application.
That's what they're gonna tell us.
No, I'm asking, why are we entertaining it? I don't see a need for it. I don't understand, that's why I'm asking.
You're saying why it's front of the board?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, change of use and it doesn't meet the setbacks for the side yard setback?
For an existing, pre-existing, non-conforming building? So when we changed that POR, it didn't include things like that?
The use is permitted, but the setbacks do not comply.
So when they changed the ordinance for this, that was not addressed?
Right.
The ordinance was changed for use. Change of use requirements are still in the ordinance?
Well, you have a pre-existing, non-conforming building. Quite frankly, both of these applications tonight seem like a waste of time and money. I'm just not quite sure I'm following it. I mean, we're gonna hear all that kind of stuff, but I need a lesson in land use, because I'm not understanding what's going on here.
One of the things that I've been looking at when we changed the POR zone is that when we do change one of the business, um, the business or whatever is in there, that we really have to take a hard look at the, um, impervious coverage and all those other bulk standards. And my suggestion would be that we adopt R2 standards for these changes in the POR zone.
We're thinking the same way, because eighty percent of this town is pre-existing, non-conforming.
Mm-hmm.
You can't make a building shorter without chopping something off to make a piece of property wider. So we're gonna require variances for this.
Yeah.
It's government at its finest, no question about it.
We had, we had a, um, an itty-bitty committee several years ago to residential zoning, and we were trying to make the process easier, but things slipped through the cracks. So until we can get the ordinance changed to, um, to reflect what would happen in the R2, if it was a strictly an R2 zone, then we have to hear it.
I understand we have to hear it, because we didn't--
Right, but we can--
--we didn't correct things properly.
We can take a look at it, and just as we took the lead with the POR zone into changing it, we can get to the, uh, the mayor and council and say, "Look," and the planning board, "Look, this is what we suggest we do when we have a, uh, a change of use that's now gonna be more residential, and, uh, let's use the R2 standards."
Yeah. And we've got two applications tonight--
Mm-hmm.
--which both existed for probably well over a hundred years. Exact same building, hasn't changed.
Yeah.
Exterior hasn't changed, the property hasn't gotten bigger or smaller, and you can't make it bigger or smaller. And we're making people do this?
Yeah.
We gotta, we gotta change that.
Yeah, we gotta. That's something--
So I do have a question, follow up with Rich. Do we have the ability to have a waiver committee?
No, the planning board does.
Not for variances, the planning board can't do it for variances.
It's not. So Mike, if I'm looking at this tonight on Schedule B, the one variance that is marked on your report, it's the minimum side yard, eight feet and twenty feet. So we are five inches, five inches out of compliance on the one--
Mm-hmm.
--and we're two feet, seven inches on the other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The minimus.
So is that the only reason why that they're here in front of us?
Yes.
For that?
Yes.
That is a shame.
It is.
It's nuts.
It's, it's a shame. It's a shame for the town. We're trying to encourage people to come in.
Mm-hmm.
They're putting, I can't imagine the amount of investment that's coming in on this, and now because of less than a five-foot variance, we're making them go through all this, and we're in front of this board?
I believe--
We have better, we have better things to do to move stuff through.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I think, Art, that, that we need to get this thing corrected right away, because this is not gonna stop.
Because one of the things that Brian did on, on the first of the year was give the planning board marching orders that we're gonna do a deep dive into the master plan and to the zoning ordinance. And I've got a half dozen that just impact my neighborhood.
I'm gonna make a motion right now that we approve this application.
I don't know if we can do that.
Second.
I think, I would too, but I've-- Let's, they're here. Give us a brief synopsis of what you wanna do, and let's rock and roll.
I think just to, just to touch on all the protocols, I think it would be appropriate to have the applicant or the applicant's attorney simply appear and make whatever presentation. The worst thing you wanna do is have somebody could be in the audience saying, "Well, you didn't follow the appropriate rules, and the applicant didn't make its case."
Right.
And then we get flipped, and we get flipped in the law division. So I, I, I would, my recommendation would be for the applicant to appear. You know, i- i- if the board is so inclined, I, you know, certainly, I know, I think a brief presentation would be in order.
Yeah.
And if you believe you need your witnesses, that's fine too, but, uh, I think it would be better to keep to that procedural protocol.
Plus, their, their professionals are on the clock, they're gonna get paid one way or the other.
One, one other thing, because I know at least one of the applications has previously been before this board, so you know that, you know, the board is aware of the principle of one-stop shopping, is that once a board gets an application, it tends to keep it. Uh, the law is pretty definitive in that regard. I know I was discussing that with the applicant, one of the applicant's attorneys earlier today.
Okay. Would you like to make your appearance, please?
I, I need to be interpreter for my friend.
I can't hear you.
I need to be an interpreter for him.
Okay.
All right, well, that's fine. I mean, I'm gonna swear, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna swear you both in, is, uh, okay. Sir, are you the attorney for the applicant?
The engineer.
The engineer, okay, great. Now, because you have an interpreter, I'm gonna, there's essentially gonna be two oaths, okay? First of all, sir, would you raise your right hand? You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give me in this matter will be the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Roberto Martinez. My last name is M-A-R-T-I-N-Z.
Very good. And you're interpreter, sir? Uh, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear that you're, that as an interpreter, you will--
Other way.
Oh, he's the interpreter, okay. Well, that, I, let me, uh, let me also swear you in.
I'm, I'm Jose Vargas, and I buy the property like this, that's the reason, only two inches.
Okay, well, please, just, please raise your right hand.
Okay.
You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give me in this matter will be the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
All right, please state your name, spell your last name for the record.
Jose Vargas, and I divest the property.
All right, well, you're, Mr. Martinez, I just wanna make sure that by giving your oath, and I'm instructing you rather than make you repeat it, but, you know, you've essentially, you've essentially sworn before the, before the board, which is a quasi-adjudicial body, that your interpretations will be faithful and accurate as to every, everything stated by, by the, by, by the client, by your client.
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. With that understood, I think you can-- Welcome.
So, um, we're here, I'm here helping my friend, because he purchased a property. Uh, it, it's, uh, right now, it's, uh, it was an office when he bought it, but, uh, it's gonna be converted back to his original use, which was residential.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, you know, that's basically why we're here. You know, we wanna move, uh, our friend, family there, and we've required this, we have to hire engineers and everything, just for--
Yeah.
--five inches and something like that, so that's basically why we're here. So if you have any questions, we're happy to, to address, but basically, I mean, that's what it is. You know? We're bringing it back to the original use, which was residential.
What are you gonna do on the backyard? Are you gonna keep the parking lot as is, or are you gonna put grass in?
Right now, we wanna keep it like that, because we just made a big, uh, investment, but our idea is in the future, you know, have just a little bit, and then the rest be a grass area. But right now, we're just gonna leave it like that.
Do you think you're gonna come in for a garage?
No.
No.
I'd like to see more grass there. And we can put a timeframe on that.
Okay.
Because that was one of the things that, uh, someone had talked about in converting another piece of property in the POR zone. I just wanna leave my parking lot like, and we did that on, um, Ross Street. We made them, uh, cover that with, with grass. Anybody from the board have any questions? Anyone from the audience have any questions of the testimony just given by Mr. Vargas?
The only question I have is, is a stormwater pipe, I just don't know where it goes. There's an existing nine-space parking lot with a catch basin in the rear.
The engineer.
I think it heads to the south.
It goes, yeah, it goes back, but I don't know if you're aware of the rest where it goes.
Goes downhill, that's south. Should.
It goes to the back of the property, but after that, we don't know.
It's, it's south.
Right. I think it ties into--
Is a grate in it?
And, yeah, he talked to the, to the neighbor about that, and he said it just continues to the end, to the, all the street.
Yeah, I think it ties into a private--
A private, yes.
So anything I--
Do you need some testimony from the engineer, just to clarify your--
I don't think the engineer is here.
Is your engineer here?
Yeah.
Oh, he's here.
Oh, he's here?
Yeah. He's charging, might as well put it here.
Sir, would you come up, please?
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I'd like you to answer the, our engineer's questions. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear, yeah, thank you, into the microphone. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give me in this matter will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Yes, my full name is Claudio Andres Romero. Uh, my last name is R-O-M-E-R-O.
Very good. And, uh, sir, could you favor the board with your qualifications?
Yes, I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey with an active and valid license to practice the profession in the state. I hold a five-year, uh, degree in civil engineering and over fifteen years of design experience in different projects, ranging from minor to ma- major developments, and for residential, commercial, and industrial properties.
Are there any questions with regard to the credentials of the--
No, let's stipulate to Mr. Romero.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mike, you have a question?
Yeah, it was just that you had that catch basin--
Yes.
--on the parking lot, but I think the pipe goes south.
Correct. Do you wanna, I can put in the exhibit, you know, on, on the screen, or--
Yeah, I think it'd be beneficial to everyone, just to see it.
Sure.
If you can.
I'll bring it to the screen.
Okay.
Has that already been submitted as evidence? Was that already submitted with the application materials?
Yeah, yes. The plan that I'm gonna use is the variance plan that we submitted to the board.
All right, well, then you don't need, it does not need to be marked in as evidence based on your, based on your assurance.
Yes, no, it's not, it's not even marked.
Very good.
Okay.
You worked ten minutes ago, right?
I think you can explain it.
Yeah, I gotta say, we have--
Is there a drain, um, a grate on it?
Yeah, it's, the existing, uh, parking area has a catch basin, and it's an existing pipe draining to the back of the property. It's a metal cover that is a structure, drainage structure, and it's a pipe going south, crossing the properties and draining to the back of the property--
Yeah.
--to the back properties. It's a existing pipe.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Vargas, he spoke with the neighbors, and they're aware of this pipe, they know that this pipe's been there for decades. Uh, none of the neighbors have any issues with drainage issues, so it's been working for years, and it's gonna be, it's gonna remain as is.
Yeah, I, my, my comment was just to make your best efforts to try to get some kind of license agreement to tie into a private system. I understand it's there.
Mm-hmm.
You can only do so much. If the, if you can't get it, you can't get it, but to make the effort, if it's tying into a private system on a different property, uh, to somehow moralize the rights, and I think that brings up the point of the metal cover. I think the metal cover is shown half on this property, half on the adjoining property. So obviously, that easement license agreement, whatever, would address that metal cover.
Yeah.
Correct.
Who's responsible for it, uh, so forth.
Yeah, I understand.
That's the only thing that bothers me, is the metal, the, uh, the cover.
Yeah, there's a cover there, there's a pipe. Uh, the other comments I had, I think there's one or two slabs potentially that the sidewalk is uneven, and a small portion of the apron, the driveway apron that's, that's settled.
Correct. I, I mean, I spoke with the optician, and he agrees to repair--
Yeah.
--the sidewalk and the grate.
And the other comments was what the chairman said about green space, and there's nine parking spaces for a single family. Do you need nine? And what the chairman said.
Yeah, I'd like to see some grass there, like, I don't care if you have to cover it up and put sod down or whatever, but I'd like to see less impervious coverage.
Yeah, well, the--
Yeah, like you said, uh, it, it's in his plans.
Mm-hmm.
So can we say within a year? Eighteen months?
Yeah, he said--
Okay.
Something like that. One other point is, uh, the property doesn't exceed the maximum coverage for impervious, so it's within what is permitted in the property.
Right.
You wanna make that a condition of approval, Mr. Chairman?
I would.
Okay. It'll be, you know, sort of, essentially, just to be clear, I guess this is the parking area will be reduced?
Right now, there's nine spaces, and what the chairman is suggesting that maybe this nine may be reduced by a number of spaces that adds more green space to the backyard, so there's a barbecue area or something other than blacktop.
But, Mr. Chairman, if I can, uh, you know, my professional opinion is to provide enough parking, not just for the residents, but, uh, the nature or the location of this property is in a, in the high, in the state highway, and there's not much parking available on the street. So, you know, my recommend, you know, if he has visitors, or so he's gonna have a party or something, it's better to have parking off-street than having on the state highway.
Is he going to live there?
No, his family, right? Who's gonna live in there?
So what's--
Yeah, his daughter, his daughter is--
So it's family?
His family, yes. A single family.
Is there a number in mind in terms of how many spaces are to be reduced?
Why are we complicating this thing? The guy's family's gonna live there.
Let me withdraw that.
Okay.
Who was comfortable?
Very good.
Um, is that it?
Yes.
Does anybody from the board have any questions? Anyone from the audience have any questions of Mr. Romero? Okay. Your sumer, your summation?
Yeah.
You think it'd be good?
Yes.
Now can I move it?
Seconded.
You know, I was just thinking, maybe we should have Bill Kelly here. You know what I'm talking about.
Exactly what you're talking about.
It's been moved.
Second.
Second. Cliff, I think, um, what do you have?
Only conditions are subject to Mr. Cole's report and our standard conditions of approval. We've withdrawn the other condition in connection with the parking spaces.
Hmm.
Those conditions are what, leveling the sidewalk?
Leveling the sidewalk and apron and making best efforts to try to get some license even--
And that's it?
Yeah.
That's, that's the deal.
Okay. Okay. It's been moved, second. Roll call, please.
Chairman Hader?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenets?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Videmsky?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
That's great. Yeah, I just--
Congratulations. I'll prepare a resolution or approval, which should be heard at the May fifteenth meeting.
I don't, I don't want some kid doing a Mickey Mantle out there in the backyard, trying to catch a point, um, the ball. Rich, you're right, we're talking--
Yeah.
It, it, it's something that we're all, I don't have twelve and eight on my property, and very few of my neighbors do.
Right, I mean, it's, and we've got, our talent gets backed up if we're doing this.
Yeah, we'll have to give the, give the officer some leeway.
Yes.
This doesn't make sense.
Yeah. Okay. That's the problem, make sense. It gets you in trouble.
It's government.
At its finest.
The only constant in the universe is the bureaucratic mentality.
Oh, no problem. Well, he's a good-looking man. Good evening. Uh, good evening, members of the board. Uh, my name's Mike O'Grady, I got Savo Shawk Law Firm here in Somerville. I'm excited to be on an application for, I know, uh, a property we've all had in our eyes for a long time. Um, we're here on behalf of Somerset Hospitality LLC, um, doing business as Sustain Restaurant. This application, of course, is regarding the historic building where the former, the latest tenant was TD Bank and, and many other banks before that. Uh, this application proposes an extensive renovation, a multimillion-dollar renovation of that space, uh, to turn it into a restaurant and bar. Um, my, uh, client intends to, uh, of course, you know, completely renovate and redecorate the space and add a mezzanine for additional dining.
Hmm.
Uh, this is, um, proposed to be a centrally located bar, uh, which would be on the ground floor, a whole new kitchen, all, uh, all-new, um, interior. Um, we also have an area for a, a small music stage, a waiting area, and a private dining area located in the old vault, the bank vault.
Cool.
The basement, of course, consists of storage and bathrooms and a, and a secondary kitchen prep station. A kitchen has a two-story ceiling height, and there's an elevator, uh, proposed to be installed, which, which stops on all three floors, that being the, the basement and the ground floor and the mezzanine. No exterior changes are proposed to the footprint of this building, uh, other than, um, something I know we talked about the last time we were here before, was, which was the restoration of that amazing clock.
Good. Reading my mind.
Yep, and we, I think that's the first thing we all said when we met as, as a team, that, uh, the borough would be very appreciative to get that, uh, that piece of art working again. There's also a proposal for a sustained brash finish logo signage above the door. Uh, and of course, we're just like the, the building next door, we intend to clean, uh, the brick and the stone. Uh, for operations, uh, we're anticipating twenty employees for this site, uh, which would be for peak dinner service and about twelve to fifteen on slower times. The hours of operation are intended to be from eleven to eleven, Monday through Wednesday, and then we, uh, the applicant is requesting the, the full eleven AM to two a, eleven AM to two AM Thursday, Friday, and eight AM to two AM Saturday and Sunday, although the anticipated operations are closure probably around ten PM to twelve PM. The, this use, uh, is, uh, in the B1 Zone District, this lot, um, and of course, as we know, restaurant uses are permitted principal uses in the B1 Zone District. Uh, the only, uh, pre-existing non-conformities is of, uh, is the building height, as indicated earlier. This is a building that, uh, dates back well over a hundred years, approximately a hundred and fifty years. The building height, as it sits there today, is fifty-two feet, whereas three stories or forty-five feet are required, uh, so that's relief that was identified in the Cole memorandum. And then there's another variance for the minimum rear yard, also pre-existing non-conformity, where there's zero foot, it's right up against the property line. This application, uh, we intend to have some jazz music at the stage, uh, as part of this use. The owner of this building and the three, and the two adjacent buildings is Jim Kavanaugh. Jim Kavanaugh's, we were first before this board, Village Brewing, same team, probably, who, gee, six or seven years ago now. We then came to remove the TD Bank, um, from the parking area. There was a kiosk for the tellers. Um, that was the last hearing, and then, I guess, last year or the year before, uh, we were here for the conversion of some of the, of the office, uh, into residential apartments. I don't know if I mentioned this, this is intended to be a vegan restaurant, so it wanna be very unique, uh, high-end, modern, with a full liquor license, uh, and a vegan menu.
Vegan liquor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, with me tonight, I have, um, Susan DeHart and Dylan Catino from USA Architects to provide the, the in-depth testimony related to the floor plans. Uh, we also reviewed the Cole memorandum related to, uh, a concern about, um, refuse, um, and we've proposed what I'm gonna enter into an exhibit as A1, um, trash cart that would be, uh, able to temporarily store some of the garbage before it moves over to the dumpster enclosure. That dumpster enclosure was built as a condition of approval for the Village Brewing site, uh, and we intend to utilize the, what, the, the new trash enclosure. Uh, we've measured, it's about, uh, close to a hundred yards away, so we're, uh, going to detail, um, a small area that we're gonna fence in for temporary garbage storage, as well as, uh, the ability to store any refuse within the building when not being transported from the staff to the, to the dumpster enclosure. We do also have Mr. Stires here, from his firm in Somerville, uh, available to answer any questions, although I don't intend to, uh, introduce him as a wi, as a witness unless there are questions related to site engineering, again, there's, there's no, uh, no changes to the, to the site. So I would ask that, uh, my two witnesses be sworn in.
You saw me swear the testimony, you're about to give this matter with the truth, so help you God.
Susan DeHart, D E, capital H A R T.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, and sir?
Dylan Catino, ca, uh, last name capital C A T I N O.
Thank you, Mr. Catino.
I have one question, Art.
Yes.
Are we allowed to have a board adjustment hearing without a Stires testimony?
No, without, no, it's in the ordinance. It's in our master plan.
So, Susan, I, I understand you're the licensed architector, architect on this project, could you just go over, um, your credentials and then, uh, describe, um, generally, um, the project, and then we can get into some more, uh, testimony from Dylan?
Yes, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since two thousand nine, I've been working with USA Architects for twenty-three years. So we are working on the fit-out of the first floor and basement of the existing bank building to turn into a restaurant. Dylan's the senior designer who's been working on that, so he's gonna talk about it in a little more detail for you.
Yeah, so I'll just kind of briefly touch on kind of the big design elements and the focal points of, you know, what we're doing, primarily to the exterior. So as you know, the, the building is, is inherently kind of beautiful with its, its ornate detailing of the existing masonry, um, you know, the, it's in pretty excellent condition for knowing how old the building is. So as you'll see in the proposed images that we've developed, um, all of the exterior windows and the fenestrations are, we're proposing to replace them. Currently, the, the windows that are there now are, you know, wood-framed, single-glazed, they're, you know, out, way outlived their life expectancy, so the new windows will be, you know, thermally efficient, thermally broken, double-pane glazing. And then, as you could see too, the, you know, this, we feel this is going to be a more elevated dining experience, right? So, um, these, the windows and the, and the kind of the finishes, we're, we're thinking of a light bronze brass finish, and that just kind of gives you that elevated feel and that flavor. And then with the, with the restoration of that existing clock, you'll also notice that there's, there's those tones that are within that clock too, so. So these little nuances of these, of these kind of brass tones are gonna be carried throughout the windows, accents on the interior, the design. And then, you know, as we move inside the building, the, the real, you know, the heart of it is going to be that central bar, which becomes the focal point. The scale inside is pretty incredible, we're looking at almost seventeen-foot ceilings, um, again, which gives us that opportunity to have that kind of mezzanine, uh, dining experience. And yeah, again, as, as was previously mentioned, a small stage for live music, um, and then the back of the building is going to be all dedicated towards back to house, kitchen, um, stuff like that. And then their pretty, pretty incredible vault door that is, you know, to be put on display. Um, within that space is going to be an op, an opportunity to have private dining and stuff like that, so. Yeah, we're, we're thrilled about this project and we think it's gonna be a, a great addition to Somerville.
I've got a question right now, were the windows open? Windows on Maple Street, will you be able to open them?
So we're proposing to have them fixed.
Yeah. I'm thinking noise.
Right, exactly, yeah, and, you know, the, the STC rating of the windows will account for, you know, to try to keep that muse, that, that, that noise that's happening within to, you know, mitigate that from traveling outside, so.
You have a liquor license?
There will be a full liquor license, yeah.
Where did, where did the liquor license come from?
Yeah.
Much to the chagrin of the Oak Group, uh, who, we understand, were, were bidding on that liquor license, I believe it was from the Japanese restaurant on Main Street. Mr. Kavanaugh, uh, who is the owner of this building and the two adjacent buildings, unfortunately, he's of a little advanced age and he was unable to travel here tonight. He made, uh, made his, uh, cut his teeth in Morristown. Uh, he owns several, um, high-profile buildings in Morristown, he also owns the Iron Bar in Morristown. Uh, he also owns, uh, the Resolution and he has, of course, the building with Village in. So he, uh, is the owner of the liquor license and he's partnering with another, um, businessman, uh, Chaz Stevens from Somerville. So it's a partnership, I'm not a hundred percent sure exactly what that partnership is. Um, I, I wasn't asked to prepare that portion of, of the deal, but, um, I can tell you that, um, Mr. Kavanaugh is a very experienced restaurateur. And, uh, he's made some significant investments in, in, in the Somerville area, uh, including the restoration of those, of those three buildings that he owns on Main Street, and this is the final vacant space. So we're very excited about, uh, this outfit, and again, it's a very high-end renovation of this space.
Nice.
Harry can take the top seven feet off that building. I guess you're not, huh?
It's not in the plan.
That was humor.
Firehouse humor.
The bar, the bar area looks really neat, uh, are there gonna be TVs around?
So, I, um, we have, we haven't, we haven't really had that conversation yet, so to, you know, kind of find, we're in the stages of really getting into kind of the, the specifics with this project, so. But, you know, from conversations, I don't think that's really the vibe, right, that we want to have with this particular restaurant, so, um, but, um, not sure if I answered your question, but.
It's not a sports bar.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. I think the, I, I think of the entertainment and the focus will be on, uh, the live music that would be displayed.
I could go vegan if the jazz is good.
Did you say there was gonna be a stage?
Yes, yep, small stage.
I just wanted to be sure whether that was a stage development or actual stage, okay.
Anything else?
I'm curious, did, did they require a cabaret license for that? No such thing in this town, is it?
I don't think so, and I know that, uh, Governor Murphy has been doing an overhaul on liquor licenses in the state.
I just don't know, because it, being a stage, it changes things.
Yeah, I know.
I'm just curious to say.
The macro breweries also.
I don't believe there's, there's any additional licensure for that, but we, and I, the architect can testify this, but we had to address that type of use in the bathrooms for the demand that could be there for, you know, the live entertainment. But again, it's, you know, really more of a jazz bar scene, not a rock club.
I love it.
Yeah.
You mentioned the bathroom situation, the basement, you're gonna have to comply with the state code on that, it's really gonna not do it us.
Anyone else on the board have any questions of the testimony just given by, um, Mr. Catino and Ms. DeHart? Anyone from the audience have any questions on the testimony just given?
I have any testimony, I have more questions, I have is to report, I didn't hear anything on terms of, I'm sure this HVAC is gonna be screened, it's not on the plans, the ducts, exhaust, all that. I just didn't see it, it's nothing externally shown in the building, so.
Yeah, we're loo, we're looking, um, kind of into, uh, the best location for, for that unit, um, we were thinking, um, trying to conceal it up high on the roof and some area.
Yeah, the HVAC design is still in progress right now, I do think there might be some potential to put the larger unit in the basement as well, which would alleviate that issue.
So any HVAC equipment in public view will be screened?
Yes.
I'm not sure if it's up on, you know.
Yes, anything visible, we would be screening.
Right, and then the noise data you provide, whatever that turns out to be when it's sized can be provided?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, then I had a question about the roof leaders, are not shown internally, just to make sure they're not tied into the sanitary sewer system. I just didn't see any external drains, leaders.
But we're not aware of that condition, but we'll verify that as the design progresses.
Yeah, I still don't know where the roof leaders are, just a standard condition is to making sure that sump pumps and roof leaders are not tied into the sanitary.
Understood.
And then I, I had a comment on the cook, I'm not sure you have cooking oil to be used, used cooking oil, it was the Village, we had a remote pickup. Is that anticipated to, to, to have a deep fryer or?
I don't know that for sure at this time, we're still confirming the menu and finalizing the equipment that's going in the kitchen.
Okay, but should you be a, a deep fryer?
We would make accommodations for that.
Do similar to Village have a remote pickup of the, what I, I'm just trying to avoid like we did in Village, having used cooking oil tracked out to the dumpster location, because it always spills.
Right, okay.
At Village, we had a remote port and the tank was kept in the kitchen area, and it just gets sucked out whenever that need arises.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm not saying you're gonna have cooking oil, but should you have cooking oil, that you put the provision in to take care of, uh, picking up the used cooking oil.
Okay.
And I, well, I just, I, I think, um, it was a question, a comment about settled, some of the pavers have settled, so taking care of that. We could just say, if there's anything in the report, we can go through each page or just say, we'll, we'll comply with that, there's not anything heavy in here, but it's the basics, take care of tripping hazards. There was a comment on there about the, whether the signs proposed projects more than eight inches, because then you would need variance relief, if it doesn't, you don't need variance relief. Comments about just having the LED stimable, so we can just adjust in the field, any, any for this, the light?
We should be able to comply with all of those things, yes.
And the storage in the basement, the storage is quite large, I'm assuming, the question in the report was whether the storage is on for onsite for the restaurant, uh, use?
Yeah, so the storage would be supplies for the restaurant, there's a prep area down there too, and then alcohol storage as well for the bar.
Okay, and it's what, uh, I think, uh, Mr. O'Neil already said, I put the UCC code in, but you'll have to comply, just to point out that the gender neutral does not appear to be allowed because of the octane season loads, but again, as, as Mr. O'Neil pointed out, you're gonna have to comply, I just want to make sure that if the plans need to amend, that the board's okay with amending the plans with that slight deviation, for example, if you have to put a men's and women's room in the basement, to change it, that the board's comfortable with that change being made without coming back to the board.
Absolutely.
Right, that's why.
Building code.
Well, that's what I'm saying, make sure, what I'd like to do is I bring in the UCC comments to make sure that the, if things need to change, that the board's aware of all this, and, uh, that the applicant's aware of what the construction department is interpretation of what needs to be done as it relates to this application.
Understood.
Mr. O'Grady, would the applicant be amenable to a condition of approval which would involve or entail, uh, compliance with Mr. Cole's report?
Uh, that's acceptable to the applicant, we went through it, and we have no objection to the comments in Mr. Cole's memorandum.
And that'll be a condition of approval?
Yes, sir.
Anyone from the audience have any comments on the application, yes? Please come forward.
Please give your name and address, please.
I don't want to touch it. Hi, um, Celine Graves, um, ninety-seven East Spring Street, um, and I just had a few questions. So sorry, I don't want to knock over here. My first question, um, is there a, an historic society, um, in town or in the county that oversees, um, some of these types of renovations or taking over a space that is older?
We have a historic advisory committee, but they don't have any, they, we haven't gotten them involved in anything, or they haven't been asked to be involved in anything.
My other question would be, um, how would resident, how would someone appeal if we were concerned with the approval of this process, of this, um, pardon, of this?
Secure an attorney.
Is your response that the only method that someone would have to respond to an approval, to put an appeal to an approval, would be through a legal process? That's what I hear you saying?
This is a legal process, this is a judicial body.
It's a quasi-judicial body, yes.
I, I think what he's saying is that we can't give legal advice.
Right, but there is, um, at the moment, um, as confirmed by, um, Monday's meeting, there is no zoning officer in, um, Somerville.
And your point. Yes, he's.
So then how would we?
He is still here, working part-time until his replacement come, is up and running.
So he would be able to, um, respond to paperwork, that, that sort of, that's unusual, okay, that.
So if I can help out, Cliff, how, if, if she wants to appeal this application after we approve it?
If we approve it.
If, if, if it's approved, correct.
If we approve it, what, what is the process for her to go through to do that?
Well, the statute of limitations is forty-five days from the date of publication of the notice of the approval. And, and so, uh, that's, that's essentially the time within which you, you could go to court. Since this is not an approval by the zoning officer, it doesn't fall under the category of the twenty-day approval, you would, you would have to litigate. You would have to litigate if the board would, yes? Yes, you also have the oppo, you also have the right to appeal to the, to the Borough Council.
Right, correct.
Uh, either, either to them or to the Superior Court. Uh, you know, I, my familiarity is with, this, this municipality has a provision to, to appeal to the, uh, to the Borough Council. But in order to preserve your legal rights, if you were gonna take an appeal in court, you would have to do it within forty-five days of the decision, of the publication of the decision by the secretary.
Well, but are you aware that, um?
I, 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 I'm, I'm just telling you what the law is, I, I.
Right, no, that, there's, and so with, if there were an appeal, how, what would the timeframe generally be from when an appeal is presented to the Borough Council, to when that would be scheduled to come before this body?
I don't have that information, that should be a, that should be a, you know, a local rule, I think you can probably take it. It would seem to me it's the same, it's the same thing, you would have to go, I, I cannot give you legal advice on that.
I think the process is in the Borough Land Use and Development Ordinance.
Correct.
Gives you the timeframes in the ordinance for appeals.
And that's on, that's on the Borough website?
Yeah.
Exactly, I mean, I, I, I cannot give you legal advice, I'm sorry, that's not my.
You know, I, I, I was more asking about the standard, um, potential guidelines of how these things often go, not for your particular, um, I didn't mean to put you in a.
Again, this is one of the reasons why, you know, it would be, it would be, I think, a good idea for you to have a turn, and to have an attorney. He's a generally, he's a generally not matters handled pro se.
Right, but it sounds to me like there is a standard procedure for, um, citizens to bring appeal to the Borough Council, and that, that appeal would then make its way to you as a body?
No.
And so it is.
It wouldn't come back to us.
It would not come back to the board.
It would, the appeal to the Borough Council would be part of the process of which zoning is.
If someone were to appeal it through the Borough Council or through Superior Court, whatever they decide would not come back to us.
Right.
To re-hear, to relitigate it. I mean, I think, I, 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 I need to say, I don't want to be dismissive or anything like that, but I think it's very difficult for you to come and ask us legal questions. Uh, I would direct the board members really not to answer them, I, just as I couldn't. You know, we can, you can ask questions about, you've talked about, you know, what do you have to do to appeal and things like this, but I don't want the board to be in a position where anything it could say would be binding upon it, so, and the same thing from my end. This is why we've said, this is, you know, certainly in, in comparable matters, we've always, we always instruct people to get to, to, to retain counsel.
Right, but it sounds like there are some procedures that.
I, I just, I. In order that you can fully, and in order that you can fully understand them, you should retain an attorney. You're asking, you're asking us to essentially make legal interpretations or legal advice and.
No, no.
Well, yes, you are, and I'm instructing the board not to, not to do that. So anything else pertaining to the testimony just given by the application, or the applicants? No?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the audience have any qu, questions or comments on the application? Summation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I just wanted to underscore that, um, this application is, does not necessitate any variances that are not pre-existing for several hundred years, and they only relate to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And that is a very defined, uh, parameter in much of the case law that we talk about. Uh, we're not exasperating any of the variances, we're not increasing the non-conformities in the structure.
I think you mean exacerbate, that's what I thought he meant.
Yeah.
Yeah. There are a lot, no, I'm just saying, I think you mean exacerbate, not exasperate. There are a lot of things in the land you still that are exas, exasperating, but not that.
Agreed, Mr. Gibbons. So again, this is a multimillion dollar investment in a permitted principal use on Main Street, uh, it's a building that's been vacant for probably close to a decade now.
Yeah.
So, um, we would, we would submit that, um, since there's no variances, since the use is permitted, um, that, that really makes the board, um, have some clarity on, uh, realizing, um, the goals of the master plan, and again, since we don't need any relief, you know, it's kind of a, an unusual application in that regard, so. We would, we would ask the board to approve this application, uh, and, uh, continue the.
Stop talking.
Yeah, continue the restaurant use and. Yeah, continue the restaurant use in.
Don't alienate a friendly camp.
Thank you.
Cliff, what do you have?
The only, the only condition that I have, again, is the Cole Report. I believe Michael's report very comprehensively covers this. The board didn't articulate any other conditions.
Seven feet.
They could cut that off, there's no problem.
They made him do that in New York one time. Oh, you went up ten stories, you were only allowed five, cut him down. Someone like to move the application?
Second?
Second? Any discussion?
Yeah, it's great.
Can't wait.
Go jazz, okay, you had me at jazz, really. Now you get some vegan pork roll? A day without pork is like a day without sunshine.
Minor modifications to the interior as the fit-out goes, have the portal side, that's all.
Think it's great.
I just want to make sure there's flexibilities of.
There's always changes on the job site, we know that.
And Mr. Stires didn't say anything?
I'm not sure it's legal.
Roll call, please.
Chairman today?
Yes.
Ms. Garpenetz?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Vidimsky?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yeah.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Carrie?
Thank you very much.
What's that, restaurant number fifty-four in town now? I'm serious.
Highest density in New Jersey?
Well, have you read the stats? Our downtown is rated number two in the state, number fourteen on the Eastern Seaboard. Our town is rated the fifth most desirable small town in New Jersey which to live.
Come a long way.
We sure have. Is there anything else to come before the board? I had a couple of things, one was on January first, Brian gave the planning board their marching orders for this year, a deep dive into the master plan and to the zoning ordinance. And I've been looking at some things in my neighborhood that really concern me. So, that was one of the things I'm gonna bring before this board, I'm gonna do it as a private citizen if I can, these are things I want them to look at. I'd like them to take a look at Davenport Street, the old Joshua Doughty Lottery Field. All those lots are non-conforming. Yeah, well, I mean, between my church and the two properties on either side, we have less than a hundred feet for three properties. So, everything's gonna require a, it was a C-two variance, narrowness of lot. The whole, all the way down to Fair Street. It has to. The two properties next to my church are less than three thousand square feet.
Just so the board knows, when the restaurants in downtown, typically the planning board does it, but the policy is any change you use that puts a commercial kitchen in, goes in front of the board. Typically, it's the planning board, but in this case, it was the height thing and the use of Lot Three, which is a non-conforming, similar to forty-four. But generally, it goes in front, not generally, any commercial kitchen goes in front of either this board or the planning board. The policy is to make sure that the ventilation and aesthetics, the stuff associated with the commercial kitchen is addressed. That's been the policy for twenty, over twenty years.
So, that's why you're talking about the screening up top?
Screening, the mushroom vents to make sure it's not two, ten feet off an apartment, it complies with the state noise code. Basically, that is, that's the trigger of commercial kitchens that in SID, they have to come to either board. Typically, it's the planning board, but this board just saw this commercial kitchen application. It's unusual for this board, it's typically the planning board, but I'm saying the policy has been, as long as I've been here, that to make sure the commercial kitchen is not infringing on a neighborhood in terms of aesthetics or noise or even smells, cooking smells. Like to use the oil to make sure it's addressed, so that, housekeeping issues, I would call it, to make sure they're basically being a good neighbor. This board typically doesn't see, that's, but the commercial kitchen is what the kick is. The planning board is an easier board to appear before. Much easier than coming here.
Yeah, the people say that. It's just the nature of the beast.
When I looked at that today, they got seven feet too high in the building, cut the seven feet off more a bit, made no sense.
We set, the standards have been set and that's our marching orders.
Yes, yeah, we have to get that changed to make it more compatible to human activity.
The other thing, we were gonna talk about a conflict resolution planner, but that application has been withdrawn. So, what I, what I honestly think, the property's gonna be rezoned to make it compatible.
Yeah, going back to what Rich said, it's the Lot Three, Rich, it's not really the height, heights, you're right, but it's the lot, I understand what you're saying, I got it.
Lot Three, to me, a lot of that stuff should be remedied and all of that.
It could, but statutorily, can the.
Some things it can, some things it can't.
Right, exactly, and if they can't, then it's gotta go to a board.
Right, and I get that.
The other thing I'm asking Brian, as they're doing the interviewing for John's replacement, is that once that person is up and running, he's here, he or she is here at every meeting.
Yes.
Just as Vowosa was here, Gary Huzuka, Matty Carfellow, that's part of the job, everything we do. Huh?
Matty was entertaining.
Yeah, oh, I know. Yeah, everything they do, everything we do is predicated on their denial.
Exactly.
That should be addressing, Rich, when you raised the question, why are we here? It should be the zoning officer that addresses it, because that's the catalyst, it's not my office.
That's what I've been saying for a long time.
I, when it comes, it gets kicked to a board, then I get involved, but the question you're raising is, who's making the determination of what criteria they're using? In the past, Frank came to every meeting, and in my opinion, was very, very helpful.
Of course, yeah.
Most of the people on the board here knew, I mean, it has been, I'm going back six, seven years, so, for some younger people, but for some of the older timers. Well, you're young. I thought it was very, very helpful.
No, I agree. Many municipalities do that, they consider that part of the zoning officer's duties.
Exactly. We got away from that and I think it's hurt us. Okay, those are just some of the things I've been talking about.
We're all the same pages.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, you can ensure us a closer relationship between the board and the zoning officer too. There isn't, there isn't kind of a separation. In other words, we may do something and there may not be complete understanding from the standpoint of the zoning official.
I mean, I get the reports out a week early, so you can certainly ask me, don't, please don't kill the messenger, but I try to, can the report tell you how we got here? And so, you can certainly, in the absence.
Some of the things that we see, maybe that's how we got here, maybe we shouldn't get here. It's like this house on Western Avenue, it was a house, it became a combination, now it's actually a house. Nothing outside ever changed in a hundred years.
Right, but since everything's in flux, I'm certainly, I will certainly.
We've had that conversation.
Listen, Rich, I'm just saying that, look, no one wants a zoning officer more than me, trust me.
We've had that conversation and I know where you're coming from.
I do.
Any other business to come before the board? Someone like to move for adjournment?
Second? Is it okay, may I respectfully ask a clarifying question?
Just, yeah, well, I'll grant you that for now.
I appreciate it. I'll come forward, I'm not shouting, so.
Okay, please.
It was, oh, was that shut off? Oh, no. Hi, Celine Graves again. It was indicated that to make an appeal, we should secure representation with, from an attorney. And I just wanted to clarify if that is the only way that we're able to proceed with this? Are you, or is this is not something that people are able to do pro se as the public?
Remember what Abraham Lincoln said, a man who represents himself as a fool for a client. I've appeared pro se in Superior Court several times and I wish I had an attorney, I always won, but it would have been easier with an attorney.
Oh, I agree, that probably would be a lot easier otherwise, but my concern is, I don't know if the board is aware that.
Anyone can appear.
That high caliber ordinance is operating in violation of town regulations of the state license and health department. And we just, we need to try to make a.
We can't do anything, it's not, it doesn't appear before us, there's no application before us.
There is an application, but we were denied, we were denied being, we were denied the submission of the application.
Someone like to move, move for a second? All in favor? Opposed?
Thank you for your time.
Can't give you.